Do you feel like you have more energy now?
It's building.
It's building, but my dad had one put in years back and I remember him saying that he felt like. He was.
Yeah. It takes time.
Yeah, Donnie Brainerd just had his done about six weeks ago.
I'll see.
Great, great. He's doing wonderful.
Really?
Yeah, he said he feels better every day, but.
Oh, good. That's encouraging.
Yeah, you'll be fine.
What were the meeting minutes?
Good afternoon.
Good evening. Thank you.
Said he's not ready to run a marathon yet.
No, and my wife hid my bike.
Wasn't that the start of this?
Well, no, actually, the bike ride went well when we stopped.
We have to stop. Okay, so, meeting is open at six oh two. We're being recorded a couple times. Um, Joanne, I think all we had all of the meeting minutes to look over except for executive session of the third, is that correct? The email that you sent? It's in front of me now. Okay, perfect. So, I've read all of them except for that one then, so let me. Here we go. So, May third, that's the regular one, May third, executive, okay. I'm just, I've read all of them.
See, I haven't.
Okay, so take your time, read, scan through.
This is really a place, I mean, these were all before I was even here.
Oh, so then don't worry about those. I mean, take them home and read them for your own, but yeah. All right, TJ, do you need time reading them?
I remember it most of it.
Okay. So I'm gonna start with the first one, and Jeff, you're not on this one yet. I'd make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May third, twenty twenty two, as written.
Almost.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Jeff would abstain? Yeah. That's fine. Um, now I'm looking at the executive session meeting minutes from the third. So those you'll have to read here because she'll shred them before you read.
Yes.
Okay.
I got that.
I make a motion.
Okay, um, second, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to approve the meeting minutes of May ninth, as written.
Yeah, second.
Any discussion?
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the meeting minutes of May sixteen, as written.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes of May sixteen.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Last but not least, motion to approve the joint meeting minutes of May twenty third, as written.
Yeah. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Any audience participation? Do we know if anyone on Zoom? May please, for you, thank you. All right, uh, department, highway department, come on down. Guys been out there working hard today with the player in the wood on North Street. So bad for them.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, are they doing? All the way down and then turning around and coming back the other side, is what I'm assuming? Just on the side, okay, that makes sense.
They were all the way down, just.
Okay. We got them water and they were gone when we came back. They were gone at least two thirty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Um, we sort of. Made a joint decision, even though it is on common property. Oh, it's uncommon, and it's a safety issue, safety hazard, neither the historical condition nor the historical society has any problem with settings or protections.
Oh, good, okay.
And they were going to mark them, anybody who wanted to see where trees were, they found, it's fine. I like to be sure they're down the tree, but.
So they're taking some on both sides there, or just the one?
First part was the trees, they're right on next to Colorado. I suggest go live up the ones on the right.
Yeah.
So once he finds out that it's okay from the town to the left side.
Great.
I'm thinking of fall.
Yeah.
When that one's the person, I think all that.
Yeah. Yeah. That'd be great, yeah. Northern Tree Service. They're doing a good job. They were coming along behind today and picking up the.
Yeah, they're doing, they're doing Chester Road.
Correct, they're going down to Old Chester Road.
So I asked, I said, I got a notification from them. Right, yes. All till you're all the way down.
Oh, did you get a notification? I didn't get any.
Me either.
You don't got any trees.
I do, I have a couple. They're right on the border there. I was hoping they would take them.
Just paint them the same color when they come along. Just do yours the same.
Yeah.
You know, it's funny because I had a bunch of trees that I was concerned about, so I called Everstore. Neverstore said, well, you know. Just put a red X on the trees and we'll send somebody by to check it. So I must have checked about maybe ten, twelve trees. And no, this is the funny part. They, so a guy came along and he put one of those little pieces of blue conveyor tape on it with a thumb tap. You know, and they weren't, you know, no, that's, that's not acceptable. So I got some blue surveyors tape and I did the rest of them.
Good job, TJ.
What did I say? We used to use a blue X.
I didn't do that.
I didn't hear anything, TJ.
Yes. Good, okay, well, then I'm glad to hear that.
They're a lot better than that other tree service. We're starting building today.
Yay.
Yes. As far as the north, there's certain Lincoln, and it just made me. Now.
Where?
Beginning of the village. The villages where.
The village. Oh, North Lanford, by Blair Road?
It's, and they call it the village because there's actually like six houses together, which is, it's a.
I've lived here seventy years, I never heard that.
Really?
You know, you're not on the drugs anymore.
Oh, TJ.
TJ, that wasn't right.
Now, are they going to like roll it till that and then roll it off?
No.
Well, that's kind of choppy, isn't it? Well, I think it's better than it was, but I mean, you know.
And then an inch and a half of coat on top of that, right? After the leveling coat?
No, there's.
Well, that's what the contract said. Well, two, okay, so I was off a half an inch.
I thought they're putting a membrane.
I knew what, but they're gonna put a top.
I thought they were putting a membrane down.
Yes, that's what he, that's why he's picking on me, PJ.
Questionnaire.
From Lincoln. In Lincoln. Just before the building. Now.
Heading this way.
Yes. Now, question, on the risers for the water department. Are they putting them in? Rises are there. Yeah, but don't they have to come up some? And who's responsible for that? The water department. I talked to George about it, and I let him know that I will hire his guy to give a hand. Okay. And we're paying for it, or is it coming out of water? No, I think, I think. No, you're paying up, that, that guy's time.
Right.
But what about the pipe and materials?
You gotta shimmy off the height, TJ.
Yeah, I, well, I realized that.
They got the sleeve in there, they just gotta pick them up, so.
Oh, they're, they're like. Telescopic? Okay, I didn't, I never knew that.
Are you done with your questions for a minute?
Easy, easy on him.
I'm not gonna suddenly be kind to him. We don't wanna make him. I really, let's just go with the regular.
Oh, my God. Uh, never mind, Jay already made the started today instead of tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. Great.
Yep. Um.
They look shiny and beautiful.
I was gonna tell you that, but I was letting you finish your thing, and I was gonna say thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
How about Beech Hill?
On, um.
Sperry Road, Dan, did you put the ones up on the corner of Burchill and Hayden? Cause, or were they up? Somebody told me they were, they weren't. Yes, no? Yeah, you don't know where I am?
Yeah, I know, but I don't.
They're right around the corner there?
The county is not your garden.
Oh.
Using this, because we don't install records.
No, I, I understand that. I, I get you. I just thought those were just put up recently.
Yeah, they look.
Yeah, yeah. Cause somebody that lives up there asked me, goes, how come they were just laying there? And they must have put up, and then they, they must have put them up maybe the same day they did Sperry Road. I don't know.
Yeah. Were they, were they back down?
No, 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 they were never there, but they were never there. Yeah.
Yeah.
I was surprised because I, I took the ride down and I went, they're up. What's he talking about? So I called him, I go, they're up. He goes, they worked this morning, so I don't know. Just passing on information.
On what TJ's on. Continue, Dave.
Um, you signed this though?
I haven't been to Russell Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I haven't been down. Yeah, I haven't been down. Caution intersection, yeah.
Awesome.
That's on there. Um. All the progress that they replaced or patch, whatever.
All of them, I, each one done? All four?
Yeah.
Good.
All the parts that were replaced? Yep.
Excellent. Nobody call me, I don't know. Yeah.
You gonna be there?
Oh, you have one this Thursday?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you said we had one Thursday, and I'm like, what's that called? Okay.
It's on your calendar. Does it work like that? Can you just pass them around?
My wife does.
And it's where?
Yes.
There, okay.
Yep.
We have a regain control of this meeting. We have, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yes.
Been there for. Well, I think I do.
Oh, really?
Is that that Ford Explorer or whatever?
It doesn't run or anything?
I have no idea.
You know where it needs to go, don't you?
Can we oxygen it?
Junkyard. You don't want responsibility in that.
Yeah, it's only.
Okay.
Oh, I just wanted to address it.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, get rid of it, yeah.
That testing is probably.
You gotta have the title.
The society, that's what.
Jeff was just asking, we have the title?
That's on the.
Okay.
It wasn't on our special property.
Um, I highly doubt it's still insured.
Yeah.
There's no plates on it.
Question. No, do we have a GoPro? Wow. We gotta find that. I was gonna say Dougie.
No. Dougie has enough trouble with motorcycles.
No comment.
Russell, I know the court, it's terrible day for him.
Well, not the whole town, because I was at. That had it, but nothing else.
And seven ninety signatures, so we can pull it up.
Okay.
Sperry Road. One, two, three.
Yeah.
Four, five, six. Four, five, six. This is just what. This the, which the, of course.
Oh, yeah.
You don't sign that.
Yeah, hopefully.
And it's on the side. Okay.
Good job.
Yeah, what, don't try to do that in the scanning stuff?
No.
I don't know what scan it is, so.
Um, Christopher, any change? Did either of you get an email about logging on Nybrook, our resident? Did you get some?
Well, there's somebody down there, right? And there's gonna be another one.
Did you get something, Joanne?
Yeah, that's, isn't that, um. Carl's Ark's doing that. Down below, yeah.
A resident reached out with complaints, but I just, I directed him to email and then get on the next agenda with the person. I'm just curious if you. They are logging down there, but what I'm hearing, they're starting at about six AM.
Ooh, that's nice.
And there's the. Request about the, the hours, yeah, the noise ordinance.
Close starts.
Yeah, so. Okay, well, we'll have that next time then. Do you have anything else, Marcy?
Um, no, that is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the same process I need to.
Perfect, thank you very much.
You have any deals for me?
I don't think so. Yeah, hopefully you have some AC. So no supper?
Oh, she's no longer, uh.
Nope.
Wow.
I always forget that connection, yes.
Wasn't she at, was she here at the meeting the other night?
Yes.
Went from Chester to Beckett?
Yes.
Yeah. She's awfully nice.
Questionnaire. Yes, Ira. Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
All right, that, so we're moving right on to you, Christopher.
All right, uh, lunch is pretty quick, so.
You're done, good.
So I just wanted to let you know, so, um, and you may have heard, we've been having some issues with our fire.
Yeah, I read the work.
Yeah, we got some invoices. I talked to Chief Motters, said there are likely some more invoices that are gonna come down the line.
Okay.
Normally, this type of thing, we would be paying out of our town hall maintenance account, so a lot early in the year. Um, my suggestion is that we will add reserve funds, um, potentially, depending on how much these invoices come out, be at the end, but look at paying out there.
Okay.
High unexpected expense.
Yeah.
Pretty early.
So, not, what's the extra that's gonna come? I mean, they got everything listed here. Is there more problems?
Yeah, let me, uh.
I just like to know.
Yeah, let me blow up my email.
There's all the reporters here and stuff.
Yep.
So I'm just kind of curious. I, I understand what it costs.
Yeah, I said there, there's still more work to be done on the fire pump and then the fire alarm.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, so, um, anyway, to that end, uh, I will get in touch with finance. Um, we need to convene and be with them anyway to finish going over meeting minutes. They actually need to appoint a chair. They have a lot of business they need to attend to, so I'll, I'll work with Janet and Co.
Okay.
So like, that's fifty two hundred, roughly, just a little less.
But yeah, it will likely.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, in terms of grant updates, uh, so we've been talking about having this, uh, emergency backup generator. Um, we had a meeting with NEMA. On the, the electrical inspector and I had a meeting with NEMA on Friday, and then I talked to the chief also this morning. Um, so the plan is we're gonna pursue what's called an EMG grant. Um, that's a, you know, it's a set allocation to each community, so Landry, I think, gets twenty seven hundred dollars. That just happens to be just about the right amount to cover a great initial electrical engineering work, so we're, should be good on that. Um, and then we'll keep working with NEMA to identify what else we need to do to apply for that difference between the ARPA money we already. Uh, allocated for the generator and actually pay for the, the generator, so.
That's great.
Yeah, so moving along on that, um, so hopefully more updates soon. Um, I may need to bring, uh, the comprehensive emergency management plan or the SEM back to the board.
Okay.
Discussing back to spring.
Yeah.
Uh, but at least be signed off on and then potentially updated a little bit so that it matches what we need for the grant.
Okay.
Expect that to come down the line. Uh, green communities, um, so the fall grant, uh, fall block is, is coming right up. Uh, PBC reached out about, you know, providing some technical assistance to help us out with that. Um, I'm gonna check in with Poppy about some of the energy efficiency stuff here.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, we can keep an eye out, see if there are any other kinds of things we wanna go after, but I know that the sort of remaining items we had on our energy reduction plan mostly focused on.
For our town hall.
Would that go to the old town hall? Cause that thing really needs some windows. Their sills are falling out, and I'm not saying we gotta do them all at once, but you know, if we did like three or four of them this year and three or four next year. Seems to me financially that would be a smart move, you know, cause we, we don't even know what we're gonna do with it eventually, right? So, but you still gotta take care of it, cause I can see them from my house. That's how bad the windows are.
Really?
Yes, so it's a concern of mine, and you're throwing heat out.
Yeah.
There is something about the post office in the energy production plant, so I'll take a look.
Okay.
I did speak with the, the postmaster this morning when I was dropping off some mail, and, uh, he said he hasn't heard anything back from USPS. Facilities about.
Keeping it open if they're gonna, whatever, yeah.
Again, their lease is up in December, and they have an option to sign an official lease that.
Okay.
So. So I will keep on that.
Um, and TJ would be a good source to talk to about the green, um, community stuff, because he had been spearheading it originally. Okay. Um, so he's got a lot of info from that. Just FYI.
No. All right, so moving right along, ADA transition plans, and we're having our hip hop meeting tomorrow. Um, so as a reminder, Institute for Human Centered Design, uh, is the company that we ended up awarding the community on the block grant funds to. Um, so we're gonna come to Zoom with them tomorrow. Anyone who's interested, let me know. Um, welcome to join us. But essentially, you know, the idea is they're gonna be looking at different town buildings, identifying what we need to do to bring it up to ADA standards, and then hopefully can take that information, that plan, and use it to apply for various grants, so.
Great.
So, yeah, we can get them out tomorrow. Um, community compact, CIP. So this is a big one. Um, so we just, I just met with, um, Rick Kingsley from the Collin Center about the financial side of the capital improvement plan. Uh, so I believe now, after talking to Sarah in accounting, he's got all the documents he needs to start doing it.
Right.
Okay, so he's gonna start plugging along on that stuff, um, and I anticipate sometime in September, they'll be ready to come out here and start talking to the department heads about capital assets. So go along and get that out of the way.
That's awesome. So do you think we'll have that in time to sort of be building it into our budget production?
That is the idea, so they, I spoke with them back in spring, they said, yeah, we can have this for you by spring of FY twenty three, so that you, FY twenty four budget.
Nice.
And then, you know, going forward, it would just kind of be a yearly process of, okay, what are the capital assets needs, how do they match this five year plan?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, updating them, so.
It's great news.
Yeah. Um, other department news, uh, so finance, um, I provided you guys a list of potential finance committee candidates.
Oh.
Like I said. Uh, candidates is perhaps a strong word, because none of these people have reached out to us yet.
So you have rumors. Yes.
I have not yet, so, yeah, yeah.
Oh, Kevin Green, I always try to get Kevin Green.
So anyway, I, this, at this point.
Is that the one in this store? That's the one. Country Club?
Ooh, I don't know. I have to look.
Yeah, I go, did they just sell their house up on eighteen, across from this, from the country club? They just moved out.
Okay, so there might be some.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I know her husband, I was like.
Anyway, I'm just.
Sorry.
Distributing it, so if anyone knows.
So if we know, we can kind of.
Um, so anyway, that's where we're leaving that for the moment. Um, I, like I said, I'm gonna be trying to, um, you know, gather the finance committee again, this fall, so that they can, um, vote on that reserve fund transfer and they can prepare some other business. So hopefully that might have another person to be able to.
Okay. I have a name to add to this list on. Great.
Jeff, is that the house that they have the water going through? No.
Yeah, it's the one the state cop used to own.
Oh.
Johnny Brains.
Yeah.
Yeah, just sold for six hundred and seventy five thousand. It was in the paper. I was like, I, I called him and said, can I get a loan? Thank you.
Oh, that was a poor sale.
Yeah.
So the Highway Fire Drive Project, uh, Dave gave you the update.
Yeah.
Another meeting with the OPM at ten thirty on Thursday. I would just add to that, you know, we, we did take some time last week to look at the list of properties that passed, to take or back taxes. Didn't see anything super promising in the discussion with Dave, and I sent it to the other steering committee members. There, you know, there's a lot of properties, but they're small, and it's not clear that.
The only one is down here, it's possibility, cause that's a full acre of land.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And that's way behind in the eighties, the taxes are doing, they're not gonna ever do anything with it. And it would poke uphill for a septic. Um. It, it needs some more excavating and stuff, but it's, so we're just taking a peek at.
Well, I think, I think the plan is, we'll, we'll chat about this.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's probably the most promising. Any.
Uh, other kind of ongoing projects, uh, Shepherd Hill Farm. Sorry.
And that's right, um, Katie called, and asked, I mean, I use the word mail, because it was from time one, this is more than.
She just saw Shepherd Farm.
It was never even Shepherd Farm, that's the funny part.
Yeah.
It never was.
Oh, Matt. Well, no more. Hell.
Booted? No, she brought. You can ask them to burn it, too. I don't know who she is, but I'll argue with her, cuz I know back down well.
Okay, so the property formerly, or maybe never known.
Shepherd Farm. That's all of what it is, yeah.
Shall not be named. So Jason Ford is gonna get out there this week, uh, to inspect it, um, and take a look at, you know, what needs to be done. Um, I think Linda and I are gonna join him, but it will be in his way, and then we go. Other than that, um, so I did speak with Shannon Walsh, uh, PBPC, she said, uh, in terms of what people sort of land swap options has been out there. Um, you know, what it ran up against, basically, the town-owned property that we're looking to swap, uh, the, the title was unclear. So that's something I have to dig into, to see if that still makes sense as an option.
Okay.
And then beyond that, you know, Shannon did have a great idea of, you know, in the medium term, reaching out to one of these kind of design schools, Conway School, um, or their school at UMass, and seeing if they're beginning to be a student project, so just.
Oh, you got Westfield Technical, they have one too. Westfield Technical, they have a, yeah, those kids do some nice work, I've seen a few things.
So a student product.
Yeah.
Project to do the gardening?
Well, to do, what they would do is basically, um, you know, they do a project where they look at what kind of planning uses could be.
Oh, great.
Yeah, no, across, it's across the turnpike. There's a complete piece of property, I think that, I don't know who owns it, the town or us, or, or some individual, it's landlocked. And there, it used to be, was gonna be called the new Blanford Town, Blanford Park, the new park in Blanford, what it was gonna be called, from what my uncle told me, that's his land that flooded it. And it's just sitting there dead in, in that corner.
Brander, that one day.
Yeah, yeah, it was, cuz the turnpike cut it in half, yeah, but.
Yeah.
There's like five acres there.
Yeah.
More than that.
But I like the idea of bringing students in, I think that's a great idea.
I think that's awesome.
So actually, Kristen, uh, Katie, she was, she was a prominent school grad.
Oh, cool.
So she's gonna send me some example projects and we can pay.
That's a great idea.
Very wants to speak.
Go ahead, man.
We, um, Smitty, and then Johnny, and the board, so like, when I said before, I was probably people from the fire, and then we was playing, and we looked at that piece of property, and because it's landlocked, we could possibly use that as a crime station, hotel, that it was invested out of common, because of accident. We could go through on March.
Yeah.
Which, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's all marked.
Yeah, uh, well, when, remember back when they wanted to put up the wind turbine? There were three landlocked pieces, one was sixty-two acres that had flooded, uh, uh, potentially, you know, uh, for the very Joe. Then there was Donnie Brainerd, I think that was like twenty-three acres, if I remember correctly, and then after that, there were sixty acres that you were talking about. And, uh, when they wanted to put in the, the wind turbine, and on the map, it shows that Blanford owned the sixty-two acres and the sixty acres. And Don Brainerd, but when they wanted to put the turnpike, uh, turbine in, then all of a sudden, that became the, the sixty-two acres belonged to the state. And when we went in there, cuz then I was, you know, trying to push for that, uh, turnpike exit, and, uh, Steve Jumal and I went in there to take a look. And the next thing we knew, we were surrounded by state police. And what are you doing here? You have no right being here. And I said, well, and I showed them the old map that I have, where the turnpike exit is supposed to come through there, and I just, I says, I'm just looking to see if I can find all markers, you know? And they said, well, now you're trespassing the state property, get out. And that was the end of it.
So I think, um, as far as like places to go, we're not, we're definitely not there yet, looking for, looking for that swap.
Or falls on reservation.
Moving along, uh, so the police, so of course, we, uh, agreed with Fester to hire Ben Beal as the new chief last week. Um, I spoke with her this morning, so she got her paperwork from Kathy, uh, last week, and she, I believe, met this afternoon with Tammy as well. Um, so hopefully, at some point in the next week, we'll get a chance to have a talk, call, and act over some of the priorities for Blanford. Um, and then what I shared with you was, um, a possible schedule of the kind of shared police services, uh, meetings, so those are basically, it's the select boards of each town. And there's a, you know, there's a few key dates in there, um, you know, we're supposed to get a quarterly report from Chester. Um, and then there are also a couple issues with the agreement itself that I wanted to bring up. Which are, which are all pretty minor and have mostly to do with just vehicle purchases and how that's handled. So I will get some more detailed information to you, but.
Okay.
In summation, so, you know, one thing has changed since the, the agreement went into place, that now Chester has, uh, revolving fund for the, for police prisoners.
Okay.
So essentially, they're taking any money that comes through police details, and the select board can elect to take those funds and put it towards new police prisoners.
Okay.
This, it's kind of doesn't acknowledge that, of course, we pay for half of the apartment, so we just need to figure out exactly how that's gonna work.
Okay, and those details could be, or the money could be coming from tickets written in Blanford or Chester, so it's sort of, right?
Wouldn't Blanford come to Blanford, or Chester goes to Chester, or is it, are they going to the same one?
It's, it's all going to.
Could make sense.
Yeah, yeah, I just asked it.
Yeah, it's all going to, because they're the host community.
Okay.
So I, I, I think it's just something that we need to clarify the details.
Sure.
Maybe we can really think thought.
Okay.
Discussion. Well, maybe it's got a question.
Does that mean that the police officers are not being held to the interior? Or else it's just the administrative fee?
No, so I think, I believe this is like when, um, yeah, there's, I, I think it's the administrative fee, so some company says, we're doing free work at this place, we need a police officer, then, you know, they will, the police will charge them to do that. And that money currently is going into this revolving fund, so we'll see if we can figure out how that works with us.
Do we have? Talk about that, do we have them on North Blanford Road, any cops?
Uh, I, I.
I meant to ask him.
No, but I know that, I know that Dave asked Tammy to put out a notice, and I did see on, you know, our system, Black Door Connect, which, you know, shoots notifications out to residents, I did see there was a thing about.
Yeah, but I asked about cops and not about the road.
Oh, yeah.
And they got, you know, their, their, the road's closed, they gotta let people see that live there.
I know they have them on Moore Street for the.
Yeah, well, those guys hire them yourself.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so anyway, that's one issue, and then another issue is just that, um, as far as I can, I, I, my understanding from Kathy is that what happens, the way they've been purchasing vehicles is, well, they purchase a vehicle, and then they rotate it through other town apartments. Um, now, obviously, that would be an issue for us, if we're paying for half of the vehicle, again, just something we need to clarify.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Malicious or anything, it's just we need to clarify.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
And, yeah, so those are the major ones.
Okay.
So that's the schedule, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get in touch with Ira this week, so it sounds like he's gonna be the DA on that side at least for a little bit. Um, and see if we can, you know, solidify those dates, and, you know, get it on everyone's calendars.
Okay.
All right, so that's, um, that's it for my report, and then we just have some action items to go over.
Okay.
So, redo, the redo we do.
We do.
It's Mary called. So, uh, week prior to last, we voted on, um, the Regional Economic Development Organization funding, um, and we allocated, uh, I think fifty-four thousand.
Yeah.
Accidentally fifty-five thousand.
Yes.
But, in reality, um, so after speaking with our economic development agency, they said, well, we haven't given you the last three thousand, but you can still vote on it at this point.
Okay.
Um, so that's what we're gonna do, so essentially, um, if we're moving you, we have six thousand remaining to allocate.
That's what it says on here.
Yeah, I mean, so check those numbers, so save it on here.
So we were going to, um.
We actually need to give a thousand back, originally, correct?
Yeah, also, we had, we had voted fifteen thousand for the town playground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That put us at fifty-five, we should have been at fifty-four, but of course, now we're down.
So now we're at sixty. Six, well, or they're close.
Yeah, so, let me, let me just.
Okay.
Um, but we actually do wanna add to the town playground, um, because the cost with the hoop, for some reason, the, I don't know if I'm saying this right, they had, uh, Dave thought we had had a hoop to put in, and so we.
He was getting that out of New Hampshire, according to what he told us.
They had reduced it, because he thought, I said, which I did say, at one point, we had a hoop on the stage, but I think it was given away years ago.
We had one out there too.
Yes. So.
Yeah.
So we do have to add a little.
One by the stage.
It's gone, it was given, it was given away. So, um, we can, um, my thought was to add that extra to the playground, and then we can.
Well, he gave us the report, he said that that included the hoop and stuff from New Hampshire.
But then when I.
Remember?
When I gave the total, though, I had lowered, we remember, I was like, oh, well, we're gonna lower it.
No, I don't remember that.
Because the total on the invoice that he gave us was like nineteen, and I lowered it to fifteen, fourteen. Fifteen, I lowered it to fifteen, but we actually did need more. So I was looking at.
Okay, awesome, I just remembered a conversation, that's why.
You're right, yeah, I, I thought that was.
So you need us to re-vote?
Yes, well, so you, you just would need to re-vote that paid play space in town hall, as it was called, the application, um, to allocate rather than fifteen thousand, you know, whatever.
We're gonna do eighteen thousand.
Well, I think actually, I think we're gonna do seventeen.
Okay, go on.
Yeah, yeah, I think seventeen is the.
Oh, cuz it would be fourteen plus the three, not fifty plus the three, got it. Okay, I understand. Um, so can I just say so moved? To, um, I think I have to re, um, what do we have to do first? No, we have to retract, so we have to retract our first motion, right, and then, okay, so motion to retract, resend, thank you, our motion from, um, last meeting uh, to allocate fourteen thousand to the, um, playgrounds, fifteen thousand, so God, to the basketball court, uh, playground facility. So this is to resend it, is there a second?
All right, I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we're gonna motion to allocate seventeen thousand from the ARPA funding to, for the redo, from the redo grant. Woo, seventeen thousand for the redo grant for the, um, paving area in the playground.
Second.
Seventeen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In tatties.
Okay, now what are you gonna do with the other four?
We're gonna.
There's no more.
What do you mean, there's no more? He had six.
Yeah, that was a.
No.
Oh, that was a typo?
It's all gone, all gone. We're moving on.
This is, I'm a little, I'm a little shaky. If it's on paper, it's gotta be sold.
Yeah, black and white never lied to me before.
So you have our contract for Kristen, right? That's what's up next?
And this is another one where the number has changed a little bit, so, um, what we're looking to do now is, you know, so we were looking, if you recall, at the Bicentennial Trust, um, and there's not a lot of money in there, I think it was about nine thousand currently. Um, I, I spoke with the treasurer about, you know, looking into how much interest in the crews, um, and she said she's not gonna be able to get us a figure at least for a couple weeks.
So can't wait for a couple weeks, if I know where.
Well, I think we need to do something with the, it's.
Right there.
Well, yes, but we can also, go ahead.
So the challenge is just that, the, the growing season and the planning, it's coming to an end pretty fast. Um, so at this point, what I'm recommending we do is, uh, contract with Kristen for whole year for the services she outlined in her proposal for Watson Park. And then so, and then just for the rehabilitation part.
Which was how much, you remember?
Which, I can pull it up right.
I'd like to know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Less than two thousand.
So this way, we can just get that sort of cleaned up, so it's not a mess, mess next year. Um, because a couple weeks, I mean, season's just about over.
Um, yeah, so it's one thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Almost two grand.
Yeah.
Well, then.
So this that we.
We're doing what with this? We, we can't do much, right?
You're talking bicentennial right now?
Yeah. Yeah, so my, again, my suggestion is that we, uh, with this contract, we would just be doing the rehabilitation work associated with the garden, so if you want, I can even, I can pull up.
Well, I, I remember it, I just didn't remember the number, I.
Yeah, yeah, no.
It's a lot of, there's a lot of pruning that needs to happen, and.
So what she would be doing at bicentennial is weeding all the garden beds, removing any leaves and debris, fertilizing existing plant material, pruning all existing shrubs to restore proper shape and health with two large planting beds, removing debris and dirt from the brick patio, liming weeds grown in the bricks, selecting, delivering, and planting additional shade tolerant perennials for center garden bed to accompany the existing.
So, and what's the estimate for that?
Nineteen. The nineteen.
So planning stuff, why can't we just use the maintenance for now, and you can put that extra money next year, could we cut it down to a thousand dollars to do the cleanup?
I don't know if it'll go down that low, but you're saying.
Yeah, not plan anything this year, save it for next year, when we can do a little more maybe, and finish it up.
Man.
Does everybody know that there is a thing when you have weed killer and you put all the weeds, or maybe this one is in the way?
I, you said that, and so when I was over at the post office, the office this morning, I took a look. Um, I don't know what he used for weed killer, but.
It didn't work.
Route, no, route would take about two weeks to start.
Okay, so maybe.
Okay, so.
Now with the kids going.
Jeff, we're talking the difference of.
Seven hundred dollars.
Well, we don't, for perennials, for planting perennials, I'm guessing the difference is gonna be like maybe the five hundred dollars. Um, are we overly concerned about that?
I am. Yeah, really am.
Um.
Like to build more interest, then we could maybe do more next year.
I, I, I don't. Emotion about that.
I mean.
You know, I, I wanna see it all, all spring stuff and everything there, but I just didn't wanna jump into it, I wanna.
Well, I think if we plant the perennials this year, then next year, you know, all we're gonna be looking at is a cleanup, really. Yeah, so, so, once, yeah, so if you plant them this year, they're gonna be looking a lot better next year.
So we're, we're, we're gonna be planting perennial shrubs.
She's.
For a nail.
Whatever she deems is, I mean, she's.
You know, there's a difference in between the possible shrubbing and.
Well, the cost is nineteen hundred, so we're looking at, do we, I mean, I feel like we're a little, uh, to protect here, I mean, I think that it is, uh, it's in the middle of town, it looks atrocious. Um, I think I understand the, we're looking at the money in long term, but I do think that the two thousand is a reasonable amount for right now, to go ahead and make this jump to get it done and looking better, and then we can start to look at next year, even if we have to fund it through.
Did she give, she give us the brown plan on what, you know?
Not yet, this is just.
So for, for Watson Park, she did do, you know, walk through with Linda, um, Thursday.
Yeah.
She outlined her vision for the front gate and two certain areas deciding Zibo there.
Yeah, but Watson Park has a lot more money to.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
All right, and I would like myself, I would like to see a game plan, like if we're putting in perennial shrubs, how many, where are they gonna be located?
Here's the thing, if we keep pushing this off, I mean, it's already August eight.
Can I make a suggestion? That so we can meet with her this week, and I'm sure she'd be happy to, to show you her plans.
Yeah, well, I would like to see some.
But, but as Carol was saying, we, we sort of do need to move on this, because the time's going short for this season. Um, so I'm wondering if you'd be amenable to joining us at some point this week to, to check out her.
Absolutely.
Bicentennial.
Yeah.
But I would still recommend.
I would, yeah, I would like to vote it and get started. Um, this one right here, though, is just for Watson Park, the contract I have in my hand, right? Um, this one right here though is just for Watson Park, the contract I have in my hand, right, or is this for both? It says Watson Park.
In the second page.
Sorry, here you go.
If you're worried about it looking better, why don't we tell the town to clean up the old highway, I mean, the old town hall. The dirt and sand around it, it's up on the building, they haven't cleaned it in three years, it's disgusting, that's the first building you see when you come into town. And you're worried about the park looking bad, it's all one unit if you look at it, right?
I'll wait and. If we plant.
And they need to paint. He must be feeling better already.
Yeah.
Um, so this, yeah, so I, that's left over, so the other thing was town council mentioned. You really shouldn't be making contracts with the park trust.
Okay.
That should be with the town.
Okay.
That's, we had done it through the park trust with past.
How can you, the town doesn't own it? We control it as select board people, but that's it. It's not the towns, it is in the trust fund, us three right here are responsible for it, period.
So this one, this is, this is the, the right contract, but it just says, it, it shouldn't say Watson Park at the top. It should just say town of Lanford, so that's. All right.
Okay, so this thirteen, um.
Nineteen.
Thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy is for both parks. For this year, is that correct? The thirteen thousand.
Both on the same contract?
Number on the contract there is nine thousand four hundred.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at the note here on the, okay.
It's changed over the course of the day.
Got it, no worries, okay, so this is, um. Yep, it, it's Watson and bicentennial. Ignore that, so this contract is with Taking Root. For, um, the work at bicentennial as well as the work at Watson, um, in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and seventy dollars for this year. So I would make a motion to, um, approve the contract. Between, um, Taking Root and the town of Lanford in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
And that is for both, you said?
Correct.
Oh, I have no problem with that, now who, how, how is it split though, it's the nineteen hundred?
Correct, and then the rest. Is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
We already have it.
On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, may.
Oh, yeah, yeah, all right, um, oh, F R T A, hate this one.
Yeah.
I said no.
I think you still have to sign it.
Yep, so it's that time of year again, uh, we need, um, a member for the F R T A advisory boards. Um, in the past.
I know, I have to do it, I try to go to some of the meetings, I just.
Yeah. So, if you want me to start going.
Yeah, it's the transportation, I. I did, I went to a couple because they're on Zoom and it makes it a little easier, I just, I gotta be honest at this point and still lost as to what they're, cause I haven't been part of it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, well, like I said, I'm, I'm, you know, if, if we went ahead with this.
Okay.
I would be the alternate. Uh, there's a lot of stuff I wanna do with them that has to do with.
Why is it conflict of interest, is that, I'm, that's what it says, right? What's that about?
Oh, we're on three. Oh, the conflict of interest is just to sign in.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's a signature thing, yeah. So. Uh, I, I don't have any immediate family members and I've never been employed by them. That's a.
I, I, I.
Yes, question, John? I know. Market complaint? It's my BFF. We'll be talking about her.
I don't know.
You don't know market? You don't know the village you're on the market, how did you grow up in this town?
Obviously she didn't inflect, inflect my life, but also I just didn't know that at all. Did she drink a lot? Oh, I didn't know, it's not that she knew me.
Yes, so, um, do you need us to approve, motion to approve, uh, warrant number two?
We already did.
We signed it, but we didn't motion to approve it, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, now, as far as. Uh, should we make a motion to appoint first?
Oh, so it's a motion to appoint me as the F R T A rep?
Yeah.
And, um, Christopher Dunn. Yeah.
I make a motion that, will you like? Tara as the, uh, representative and Chris, you're dumb, have the alternate.
Uh, on favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain. I don't really wanna do it. All right, um. Unfinished business.
Yes, uh, so identifying a new Pioneer Valley Planning Commissioner. Uh, so Mike was our commissioner, TJ, you're the alternate.
Open right now, yeah.
Are you okay for the moment being the actual commissioner while we?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, great, great.
Do we need to vote anything or no?
No, we don't, um, I need to get, uh, a letter from the planning board saying, you know, TJ, the commissioner going forward and then.
They find one that.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so, so I'll take care of that. Uh, and then my F Y twenty-three smart goals, um, listed on my list.
You didn't do all that already, last thing?
Well, I, I sent you, I, I sent you a very draft copy.
Okay.
Um, and I will say that since then, what I've been able to do is meet with the county and treasurer and flush out the. Financial goals for the town, um, and my goals related to that. Um, I don't have a copy to give you right now, but I just wanted to see if anyone had a chance to look at what I already gave you, had any thoughts or comments?
I don't have any thoughts or comments yet, but, um.
Did you email us?
A while back, a rough one, but we haven't seen the new draft yet.
Not yet. Yeah, I would appreciate that.
You know, you know where to send it for me?
Uh, to your mailbox.
No, send it to Deb.
Oh, to Deb. I can start doing that.
Yeah, oh yeah, return email, cause that's the way I'll get it. I don't, I don't own a computer, I don't want one, but I have to have it now.
I hear you.
Dog, you, you have a phone number for you?
Yeah.
Can you share it with me?
You have it.
I don't have.
You certainly do, you texted me, you texted her.
I have no idea what the.
It's in your phone, but it's, I'll give it to you after.
Okay.
I don't want Mary to get it, oh, Mary has it.
So then go forward, all three of you can expect an email from me Friday afternoon before select board meetings on Monday.
Great.
Clearly be better, but.
Nope.
A little slow.
Well, I'm gonna speed up.
Uh, so, and that's it for unfinished business, and I guess we have some new business starting with. Um, Mary, I hope you could speak to the police cover.
Yes, that was from last week, yeah. Um, this right here.
We, we did this to training to you. And, and it says, on the big Mondays where it's two hours, we have to have. In-person voting for the two hours that we have posted public office hours.
Okay.
For the police of the four hour expense, so. Um, we created that we could find seven fifty. Bill for what was written, but there are another three hundred and thirty dollars on to that, now, I will say.
Yeah.
That we have police coverage on our election days, and everybody knows that.
Just a quick point, we, we always had a constable in town, which has more power than the police. And Bruce Curry, how many years did he do it? Cause he was a constable only. And why didn't he ever stop doing that? Right, why, it's still legal, they still have them in Huntington, they still have them in Chester, they still have them in.
We haven't appointed them.
Well, that's, well, that's the reason, I'm asking why.
Yeah.
It's all they do is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Under L N A P, it happened.
Oh, well, I don't, I can't see any sense of doing it, it's just.
It has to do with all the new regulations.
Yeah.
And it's, it's training, it's a lot of extra stuff. So.
Last election, the cop was sitting out in his car sleeping.
So. What we're looking for is police coverage. We are mandated for the elections, and we would like to have. Police presence for the in-person voting. It is not mandated by the election division, but it is highly recommended, and. I neither one of us anticipated any issue with this. The insertion voting toward the primary or during the round of election, but going forward. Looking specifically at twenty twenty-four. And in-person voting, and this is all time.
So is this not built into our budget?
The legislature had this bill before them, they started in February. And they do not act on it until after all of the citizen towns in Northside have set their budgets.
So how much are we talking?
Uh, for this one is. Thirty thousand. Maybe dollars.
So we're talking overall?
Our election, our election amount instead of forty-five hundred dollars. So this blows it out of the water, this is not.
So you are looking for an additional, roughly three thousand dollars for the entire year?
For.
Is this for all these?
Yeah, so, and that's the whole year, that's all the elections for the year that we're gonna be.
Does not include our town like.
Okay, so on the safe side, we say four thousand, three thousand five hundred.
Okay, so, on Saturday, we can do six hours. On Saturday, and Saturday, Thursday, Sunday, we're eighty-two thirty-three hours.
So, blah, blah, blah.
So, eighty-two thirty-three hours. Once you change it to four hours.
We can, I mean, we can fund that, we just, so I guess that's a conversation with finances, where they wanna take that funding out of. Yeah, so that's fine, so when the bill comes through, I guess we have that conversation with finance, but we're on ticket. Okay, thank you for the heads up.
I'm, I'm a little confused. I thought the state passed that. The state legislature passed that there would be no unfunded mandate, mandate. And this was about five years ago. And now we're getting all these unfunded mandates. I, I, how legal is this, I mean, you know. It, you know. I follow politics, it just don't make sense at all. So, how much are we talking total for all these?
About four thousand, we said overall.
About four thousand overall, now these. Uh, police that are, are doing the duty. All right. Is there any qualifications for them, just besides wearing a badge?
We're talking to Lanford, Chester Creek.
Yeah, but I mean.
They're certified.
They're certified for elections?
Look, I don't know about elections, but.
Well, that's what I mean. And, and the pay is eighty-five dollars an hour?
Yeah, that's all.
Then my grandson must be Texas Ranger badge at the house, gonna sign off.
What do we have next, we have, oh, expense report?
Um, made a motion to approve a sufficient number of police officers.
We need to make.
That's the new law.
Okay, so moves, did you hear that, Joe? So, my motion to approve the sufficient number of police officers for town elections, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, on favor? Aye.
Maybe, aye.
All right, um, are we good?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, no, I know, and when the time comes, we'll find the funding for the bill, but thanks for the heads up, we appreciate it.
I can just about hear you, Mary. It's all right.
I am looking at the expense report. You guys have your expense report?
I will in a minute.
It should be at, let's see, we've got, this is where our math comes in, July, August, you should, and like ten percent, right? Is that right?
Yes.
I wasn't listening.
We should be at about like fifteen percent. Yeah, so you wanna look down here, should be any like below, and so, my question is, um. Finance committee, do we pay that, um?
That's, it's a hundred percent on there.
It's sixty-nine percent.
Yeah, so, uh. I know we just had a bill for one of their memberships.
One thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay, so they know that they don't really have any money left?
Yeah, well, they always.
Okay. Uh, my next question was, um, hold on, not that page. Here we go, so town hall fuel, do we pay upfront for that?
Yeah, so that's.
That was the pre-buy you did?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Okay, um, and then IT support, is that half of our bill for? Our IT support, is that why that's fifty percent?
Yeah, let me. Oh, you know what this is, so, um, that twenty-eight thousand is actually for Springbrook, which does. Uh, software, which is our.
Okay.
Financial software, um, so they, they actually billed us last year, and we were like, well. So we've been billed twice in this year, so you guys push that, so they pushed it for this year.
Okay.
So that's what that twenty-eight thousand is.
Okay.
That's just an annual cost.
Got it, so that's the whole. Okay. Um, and then I see. Oh, that one's a weird town hall expense, that one doesn't matter, I don't think.
The various town hall expenses.
Yeah, but it's the. E N C, isn't that a?
That's an encumbrance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah, that's why it doesn't matter, okay, um, ambulance, I understand we paid a third of the bill. Oh, inspector of animals, are we paying a quarterly stipend? Because I see that we paid out a quarter, but then with the animal control statement, we only paid seven percent. Yes. Okay. So we shouldn't have paid the whole quarter? Okay, so she, so she knows that she's paid a bit ahead of time for, she's paid through. Okay.
I just treated it as, it's.
Okay, as long as you're aware of it, I just wasn't sure. Okay, thank you. Um, all right. And there's, oh, cemetery commission expense, but that's the commissioners, we did forty percent for the commission?
Yeah, that, that usually, uh. By the end of October, I'm usually by eighty percent.
Okay.
And, and then, you know, the other twenty percent is the opening up the cemetery for more of the, and that.
Um, the border health stipend is at almost twenty-one percent?
So.
Not it. Okay. And then I think that's it, cause then we start to get into. All that insurance stuff. So it looks good.
Um, and just on, on that note, I realized I, I skipped over an item from my report. Top of the second page there, um, so I spoke with the county about our warrant process. Top of the second page there, um, so I spoke with the county about our warrant process and some of the issues we've been having. Um, I know we kind of floated the idea of working for Chester, because they have insurance county as well. Um, they're really, when I spoke to Dennis, she was really, um. Let me say resistant, but she, she wasn't super supportive of the idea of having somebody come out here. Um, so, um, you know, one suggestion was, um, at least on their end, they felt like some of the issues that, that they don't have. A central point of contact, and that they're hearing from different departments with different issues. Um, so, I would, I suggested that, you know, I think, at least for our side, if everyone wants just, when they have any to. Send it to me, and I can relay whatever, if you know, Sean and Dennis apart.
Okay.
Um, that'll at least, first of all, help me understand what are the issues that are, are reoccurring.
Mm-hmm.
You know, maybe there's some ways that I can help smooth that out on our end, so.
Maybe considering the future, um, keeping Princeford to do your end stuff, the important stuff, and hire somebody hard time to.
It's a good thought, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, now that we caught up on our messes, yeah.
Yeah, and this is, uh, my F Y twenty-three smart goals, one of them is getting a handle on the balance of. In-house and consulting services on all of our.
Yeah.
Go out of house for assessor, accounting, treasurer, like they're, you know, so.
Yeah.
And it's not clear that we need all of that.
Yeah.
So that'll be a conversation.
Cool, okay, good idea. Okay.
Last item, I think, that's due with, uh.
We got Bethany Corbett is, um, so this is a student?
Yeah, she's not here.
Okay. Okay, um. And she's not here. Okay, so if, and when she's interested, she can reach back out, but, um, we always have stuff. Um, I had some for new business, um, I was thinking about, um, and it doesn't have to be a top priority right now, but. Um, putting together some sort of three sixty-five word training for employees. And I talked to a gentleman who lives in town who has done that for Springfield, and he, he said he'd be willing to put together some trainings for us. And he suggested that the first thing we do would be to reach out to department heads and ask them what would make their jo, what would make. Um, their department run smoother, what would be helpful, things like how to use the calendar, how to share a document. How to access your email on your cell phone, um, so I told him I thought it would end up looking like small, we're going to go slow. And we're going to go short, training sessions, you know, this is, we're going to come and everyone's going to be able to access the email on their cell phones, and that's all we do that day. Um, but he said that, you know, that would be something, it's, he's actually Kristen Thomas, Kristen Thomas's husband.
Okay, great, um, yeah, well, I definitely, so I, I'm creating kind of a list for a department head meeting that would be.
Okay.
Early in the fall, hopefully, um, and certainly, tech stuff is like kind of the top of that, um. So, yeah, I, uh, using SharePoint, um. I don't want to bring it up again necessarily, but the multi-factor authentication is something that returns.
Sure, okay.
Look into. Um, and then just general kind of techniques, what departments need updated laptops or anything like that, so we have a sense. Start building that in, so.
And like, I don't want to overwhelm anyone, I know that we have a population working for the town that might not be super savvy with computers. Um, I just want to do what would be helpful for them. I mean, the shared calendar is super helpful, if you, if you can, you know, learn how to do, or shared documents, so you're all on one document. You can, you know, it's, you know, it's so handy.
Yeah, you can connect me with that.
Okay, well, perfect, I think I have this card.
Fill that into our department.
Okay.
Having run the show.
That'd be great, okay. All right, does anyone have anything else?
Oh, I, I did want to mention really quick, um, so to let me know this morning, so there's a flag that was present at, uh, Wind Powers. After, directly after nine eleven, was kind of making the rounds through communities in Western Massachusetts, and he was able to get, um. It'll be on display here, actually.
Oh, wow.
Wednesday, so they're going to do, um, a little ceremony at seven P M Wednesday.
Okay.
Anyone did make it, that would be great. So, I can get more details, whoever's interested.
Maybe have Wendy put it on the website, too?
Yes, yeah.
Great.
And later on, later on in August. Uh, at the old cemetery. There that guy's coming up? That the, uh. What is it? Indians, that dirty thing, that, that commission is coming up, because one of the participants is buried up here in the cemetery. Yes, ceremony or something. Yeah, they're gonna have a little ceremony there and a, uh, group from, uh. I think it's Hammers, they're going to come down and try and restore the stone a little bit. You know, because it's, it's right in the middle of a tree, something, I was going to take a change, so I cut that tree stump away, but now I can't.
No.
Chip, chip, palm, this company, and they're pretty anxious about coming down and doing it, so, that really thing. And then the other thing that, um, was brought to my attention, I was meeting with, uh. Uh, Linda Barnard, and we were talking about the old schoolhouse there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that, and it's very interesting, I mean, that, that's pretty cool.
So we put that on our next agendas, so that we can do a little bit of, um, research as to how we will go about doing that?
Well. When. When I first took over the cemetery. That's when we found out that the barn that we were using was our first barn, and there's only two women in the state of Massachusetts that are. Yeah, horse drawn wagon, horse that we, yeah. Yeah, and that's what it was for, and, uh. So I had one off, I reached out to Storontown and, uh, Sturbridge Village to find out, you know, if. If they're worth anything for one, and how to restore it and that, and they wouldn't, uh. Share any information about restoring, but both were interested in buying. And I think, you know, something like that with the schoolhouse, I don't know if we can afford to move it, or. Well, I, I.
Well, we can talk about it next week, but I think that, um, you know, we might look into, I'm sure that there's some, um, funding available.
I think you'd have to take that apart, P J. Oh, you have, there's, there's no way you're. So we get the barn wood builders with TV and then do a TV episode so we can make some money.
There you go. Uh, motion to adjourn at seven twenty-one.
Second. Got it, what date or something?
I, it's hot and I want to go home.
Oh, there you are.
She has two executive notes.
No.
I.
I know.
Gave you everything I had. Did you take the two things that were signed that were here?
I was trying to keep it separate for you.
Did you already take the Perta thing I signed?
Yes, and we have everything.
You think a rose could set between two thorns? Did you hear me? I said, how long, you think a rose could set between two thorns?